For us tonight, Larry.
My name is Larry Pease along with Brian Picarello. We represent liaison between the Board of Education and the Consulting Committee for inverted regional, which is Rockville Agricultural Science Technology Education or legal Rockville Collag. New name, right? Because we're both in our lives, both us, with the Bolton High School. At this time, we'd like to present a senior that represents us from Bolton, the Board of Education, here it is.
Here it is. Come right up to the mic, okay? Thank you.
How cool is that?
Yeah.
So when I was turning Doyle, I'm a senior at Rockville. Actually, I live really like two minutes away. And I am going to go to Assumption University after school. I'll be playing baseball and studying finance. I think that the Rockville Agriculture Program was a really good fit for me because it got me into people who had similar interests with like as mine. I had to learn new skills in areas like shop related that I liked, I maybe didn't know as much about. And I did a lot of stuff with the shop, like engine mechanics on like tractors, learned how to weld, which is like a useful skill for like, I don't know, if something broke, I can just weld in, fix it. And I'm also now getting into some plant like stuff, I guess, floral design and like greenhouse management, managing like the crops and everything with like the scheduling and making calendars for it. I think it'd be a good life skills where if maybe something doesn't work out, I could always have something that I have like a skill that I can use. And I think that that was one of the main benefits is getting like skills where like if I'm like out of a job, I don't have like a skill that I could try and pursue that even I can use in my regular everyday life. Like I do like an oil change, change my tires, all that stuff. And I learned a lot more about those things in Rockville. And the environment is very good with so a lot. I know Bolton's nice, very small. Rockville is like my grade is the size of the whole school. So it's something to meet new people and work on social skills with a bigger setting, which was cool. I got to see like more different groups of people. And there was a lot of new things, like met thousand new people and I transferred there. And it was a very good experience. I think that it's really important to like kids being able to go there because for me, I think it was the best choice for my time in high school. I enjoyed it a lot and still got a couple more months, but it's gonna go by quick. Some of my highlights there would probably be just like getting a lot of new friends, making like honor roll. Like the like learning environment was very good for me. Some like the help I got was very good. I didn't like, I like baseball, that was a really good baseball experience for me with the coaching and getting involved with some clubs I maybe wouldn't have like got into if I like didn't get out of my comfort zone. I feel like it like got me more like accepting or like willing to get out of my comfort zone and try new things. My future plans will be to, sorry, go to Assumption. I'll be playing baseball, study finance. I'm in a five-year program to get my masters and then, and while I'm in school, I'll probably try and get internships as I get older and after school pursue a career and timing whatever the best route might be for me after I finish. And like to thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to go to Rockville. If I get possibly impacted my future and thank you again.
Good job. Wait one second.
Do you have any questions?
You should check this, you know Larry's my buddy and we jatted. So I want to know from your perspective, what was the, the best skill that you feel like you walked away with from the program? The very best?
I would probably say some like social skills I feel like were very good. Where like I just like went to school with the exact same people pretty much my whole time, like knew everyone. So I feel like it got me to be like more outgoing, to get out of my shell. I also feel like practical wise, I feel like the welding was something that will really help me because it's like a skill. And I, I guess I could weld something right now.
To know, I know who to call. All right. Well, congratulations. Well done and congratulations on going to Assumption and playing baseball. And don't forget to send that email like I told you, hopefully there's more money for you. Congratulations mom and dad too, and thank you gentlemen very much. Good job. You guys can feel free to stay or you can feel free to go. It's up to you. All right. Next, we're going to move on to the Bolton High School Annual Musical. And as soon as they head out, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Micali who has a brief presentation for you. Good night, thank you. Best of luck.
So it is with great pleasure that I share this month's celebration of excellence for Bolton High School. As you may know, and you can draw your attention to the screen while I'm talking, don't look at me. As you may know, a few weeks ago, we did present Annie as this year's musical. On the screen, you can see the many faces of BHS that made this performance possible. There were 42 students in the show, which represents 20% of the student body here at Bolton High School. This is especially impressive if you consider that many of our winter athletes could not participate in the musical. And there's 42, that's why I put their faces up there instead of having them all come in. Additionally, three staff members performed onstage with our students, and additional four staff members directed and assisted. But we even had the invaluable help of two members of the class of 2023. Student participation came from all grades, representing athletes, non-athletes, musicians, and students who had never sung in public before. In fact, if you consider any subgroup, they were represented in this musical. Ms. Carvalho once again chose the right show at the right time for the current students and thus allowed all interested members of the BHS committee to be part of the show. As you can see on the slides, there were several lead characters, including our own Mr. Joe. Students in the non-leading roles typically found ways to contribute in more than one way. Even the two students working with me on sound engineering also had onstage roles, which meant they would jump up from the soundboard, run in the back, put on their costume, get onstage, sing, and then undo that and come back to the soundboard. We can certainly celebrate the performance of Annie, which was presented to over 550 audience members over the three nights. But really, the, the reason I wanted to bring it to you tonight, the real celebration is the collaboration, diversity, and inclusiveness of the musicals here at Bolton High School. So thank you, Ms. Carvalho.
Yeah, it was awesome. It was a great show.
I want to add in there, one of our cast members actually opening night played a state
I was gonna say that basketball game down the hall.
And made it onstage.
Yep, she literally ran out of the game, down the hall and made it in time. It was awesome.
Yeah.
And that was after they won too, I might add. So great job. It was wonderful. Loved it. I sang every song in the back quietly. All right.
You can be onstage next year, as you can see, we're always looking for faculty involved.
Yep, I count me in. There it is.
Write it down.
Write it down. Yep, I've acknowledged it. Okay, and last, but certainly not least, we have Board of Education Recognition Month. I would like to just remind everybody that school board members are vital to our public education system. I would like to show our appreciation to these dedicated individuals up here with us this evening for their unwavering commitment to our district and the success of our schools and our students. I want to extend my thanks on behalf of the students and the staff of the Bolton Public Schools to each and every one of you, Chair Andrew Roneal, Vice Chair Sue Pike, Secretary Ben Davies, Members Chris Davy, Rhea Klein, Diana Pagano, and Ashley Phelan, our newest member. We are very, very fortunate to have such thoughtful and dedicated community members guiding and supporting our outstanding school system. Thank you for everything you do. I have a small token for you a little later on this evening. Thank you. And that concludes our celebration of excellence for this evening.
All right, moving on to comments from the audience. Do we have anyone in the audience this evening who would like to make a public comment? Addition to the agenda?
I would request that we please move G5, the FY24 BOE Budget Commitment, to the Finance Committee for FY25 Budget to be moved to 2C. I just think it makes more sense to be there.
G5?
Yes, then we'll create a 2C right after we do the finance report.
G4?
I'm sorry, yep, G4. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, on to routine business and approval of minutes. Looking for a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the February 2024 Board of Education Business Meeting?
Was that real?
Thanks. Do we have any comments or edits on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? Now looking for a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the February 8, 2024 Board of Education Budget Workshop. Yeah, do we have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? None, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? That motion passes. And now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22, 2024 Board of Education Budget Meeting. Second. Sue and Chris, do we have any comments or edits for these minutes? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Very good. Moving right on to Board of Education Committee Reports. Start with curriculum.
So the Curriculum Committee met, met on Wednesday. And I'm going to just briefly give you the overview of the topics because she's going to go in more depth. She reviewed with us the professional development and evaluation that's been worked on this year. And we also looked at curriculum and assessment. A Board of Ed curriculum update, a new course for music appreciation. She updated some of the reading program and the pilot information. And we talked about the seal of biliteracy. She'll explain in more detail.
Thank you very much. And on to finance.
We met and we're 55% expanded this year as opposed to 56% expanded last year. So we're basically on the same track. And I'm going to hand it over to Susan.
Thank you. So just want to remind everybody, special education is always changing. I also want to remind everyone about the continued savings and salaries and benefits due to our ever revolving door of unfilled positions, like pretty much every other district. Let me review the February transfers. So we have a reclassification to cover the cost of a replacement printer in the BHS main office. The old legacy printer is no longer supported and there are absolutely no parts available to even repair the one we have. A reclass to cover replacement of the geothermal pumps and controls at Fulton High School that you made that transfer last month, we're just actualizing it now. The purchase of reclass to purchase science instructional supplies, a reclass to cover the cost of BCS roof repairs that we had to do, additional reclass for those roof repairs and central office buzz and software reconfiguration needed to be done, and a reclass to cover supplies for the spring 2024 athletic season.
We have a motion, please, to approve the February transfers. I'll make motion through the transfer.
Second.
Ashley, does anyone have any questions or comments about any of these? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed or abstaining? That motion passes. We don't need finance?
With that part, and I'll explain the rest under the 2C that we just added.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. So in your packet, if you look on the second page of the budget update, you will see that we have additional savings that we've been able to actualize in salaries and benefits right now, an additional $101,698. If you then go on to the third page, you will see that currently what we've been able to, where we are at at this point in time, is a projected budget balance of $348,484. So at this point, I know that there will be additional savings, but we've got a lot of still revolving doors happening right now. We are in the hole for special ed for 20 something odd thousand dollars. We haven't gotten our second payment yet for excess costs. Excess costs this year, they put in a tiered system. We are in a tier two, where our majority of the districts are, and if fully funded excess costs, we'd be receiving 88%. But that all is contingent upon what districts are requesting for excess cost reimbursement. And based on what districts have asked for, we're looking at around a 70 percentage reimbursement. So you can see, like, there's been a lot of ask for for special education. So at this point, our recommendation, mine and Cassel's, is to make a commitment to the Finance Committee towards next year's budget of $300,000. And Ashley, Rhea and I and Cassel discussed that today. You know, that solicves us with some operating money. I, I know that we're going to have additional monies to return. We may even have additional monies. We may be able to add to that next month. I don't know that yet till we finish out this month. But for now, that's a recommendation that we could at least then share with the Finance Committee come next week. And again, I want to reiterate, it is due to the revolving door of positions that we, for example, we lost a special ed teacher. Well, we hired a new one, but they're not going to start till after April vacation, right? So there's some savings there. We haven't had a science teacher all year, as I've explained routinely. We are short pair of professionals. We are short school psychologists. So, you know, there's a lot of movement that seems to occur weekly. So that's my recommendation. Any questions for me? So we. Yeah, yeah, we should do a motion to commit $300,000 to the Finance Committee from FY24 Budget Savings towards the FY25 Budget. So. Chris.
Anybody further questions or comments on this?
What Bob and Rose and Ken Mathles and his expectation was?
A million dollars. That's what he thought we'd be returning in the end. I, I, you know, again, I don't anticipate we'll be there. But there may be a couple hundred thousand dollars or more.
Was that just a pie in the sky number or was that what it was their actual? That, that's way off.
He seems to have calculated.
Yeah, yeah, he does his own calculation. Yeah.
I thought they'd be happy to hear that.
Yeah. I hope so. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? All righty, that brings us to BHS Student Representative Report.
All right, this one might be a little long because I have to do mine. I did get from her, which is good. Earlier in February, the Bolton Arts Department, including students from band and art classes, had the opportunity to go to New York City, visit the Museum of Modern Art and a Broadway production with it. It was a lot of fun and there were no hiccups. The, like Mr. Micali presented, the Bolton Drama Club held the production of Annie from February 29th, March 2nd. The show was a lot of fun and there was large audience at each show. At the end of the girls' basketball season, which winter sports have come to a close, the girls had an amazing season, making it all the way to the semifinals of the state tournament. With that, practices for spring sports have begun. Baseball and softball have begun their pitchers and catchers week, while outdoor track has continued their preseason workouts. On March 1st, BHS hosted parent-teacher conferences. Parents had a great time meeting their child, their children's teachers and learning how they were doing in all of their classes. On March 12th, juniors had the SAT online from around 7:30 a.m. to 10:40 a.m., while the seniors had work on their capstone projects. The SAT, SAT went smoothly with no technology issues. Amazing. And seniors were able to get a good work time for their capstone projects. From March 22nd to 23rd, from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., the Student Council will be hosting a lot again at the high school. There will be many games, activities, and food for students. Each ticket is $10 and all of the money will be donated to St. Jude's Children's Hospital.
Thank you. I know you got stuff, Andrew. There's a go and go, go get in there. Thank you. Good night. Well, they all have to take it on the SAT school day.
Everyone's required.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, which is great.
And then do the kids still do this either?
They, we didn't have one this year, no. It's been a few, I, when COVID started, that kind of shut down and it hasn't reemerged itself. But, you know, somebody shows interest and staff member will pick it up and it'll start again. Yep. Yep.
All right, community meeting reports. I think we can start with PTA liaison.
Last month, the PTA had their gala at Abil Lisa, it was well attended and there was lots of prizes. A student will be planning their ride to on the fire truck, sorry. There's a family block that one. And we have a lot of upcoming events tomorrow. Half day, there's a Chuck E. Cheese fundraiser over in Manchester. There's an author visit on the 19th. We have Bourbon Air on the 21st. There's Monster Jam on the 24 for tickets. Some of these are not fundraisers, but just to shout out the tickets. Or we have a public meeting on April 2nd at 6:30 at the Bolton Center Library. And on April 19th, we have Mad Science Family Night, so you can sign up for that. And if your sibling, like child sibling isn't there, it's like my son is only in preschool, he gets to attend too. So, but they are looking for extra volunteers because it's going to be a two-part where they do a presentation and then a handbought activity and capture. To be well.
Great. Thank you.
That's up until April.
All right, so we have any other community meetings to report on?
I think I attended two Bolton Scholarship Fund meetings since our last Board of Ed meeting, just due to scheduling issues. But we're getting ready for the phone-a-thon, which is coming up later this month. I misspoke at our last meeting when I gave the deadline for applications. It is actually May 1st, I think I said May 5th.
Yeah, okay.
But the application should go live April 1st. We've been holding off on it for various reasons, but one of which is that there continues to be issues with FASDA data being released to colleges. So a lot of kids are, have not yet received any information from schools as to what sort of financially they will be looking at. We're hoping that we will be able to complete the application review process in time. We're monitoring that situation pretty closely.
Do you have like a plan B? Like what happens if you don't get it? Because it's a, it's a mess.
It, it is a mess and at this point, we are, our plan B is to go ahead using the data that we can collect from students and try to adjust our formula accordingly.
Great. Okay, that's great, thanks, because.
Yeah, we don't want.
I don't know that I.
Be able to.
Right, right. And I don't know that I have a lot of confidence that she'll have it by then, to be honest with you, based on what I'm hearing, which is crazy.
I mean, there's, there's already well over 200 colleges and universities that have delayed their.
Correct.
Acceptance day, some of this late in June.
June 1st. Crazy. Yeah.
What's the problem? It's different.
The, the FASDA form was redesigned at the direction of Congress. There were delays in rolling it out. And then when it finally came out, apparently the Department of Education was not able to process the forms until, they claim they just started processing them in March, so a week or so ago, and hope to get the data to colleges this month. But, you know, there's been delay after delay in the process, so who knows?
So will students be in a situation where they might need to make a decision without knowing their financial aid package? Is that how it works?
Potentially. Or they might not even know what schools they've gotten into. Right? Usually it's by March 15th, everybody knows, I got in here, I didn't get in there. Now we're talking June.
So are our guidance counselors really feeling heated with helping families manage us?
I think our guidance counselors have been awesome. But, okay, yes, we're here a little more, so stay tuned. Yeah. Good question. Thank you.
Do we have any other meetings to report on? All right, so now I'll turn things over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools report.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Monica first for an update on K5 reading, please.
Good evening. The last time we had an update, the question came up of what was pilot year zero, which is where we are. And we're going to build on that a little bit. We have been in our pilot year zero with the ELO education since the start of the school year. In December, as you know, waiver results were published by CSDE and several additional program compendia were approved. What that means is those are groups of programs. So we knew there was a possibility that the state could approve additional programs or other options. And it came up last year, what would happen if the state did that? We said we would do our due diligence and examine what was offered. So after review, one of those compendia appeared to suit our younger students in grades K to 3, and it built upon programs that we currently use. Those programs are HEGADY for phonemic awareness and foundations for phonics. Teachers requested to review bookworms. And it is an open source program that was approved along with, again, HEGADY and foundations that we have in place. And the rationale for exploring the option was more flexibility for differentiating instruction specifically for our youngest learners. And bookworms also has a greater variety of shorter texts to help students sustain their attention. So while the ELO education is a high-quality program, in some of the lower levels, some of the units go on for a very long time. And some teachers are concerned that students might be losing interest in some of the topics. Even though the work that was being performed was fully aligned, they felt like, oh, are we doing this topic again? So they tried to spiral it with different forms. So it looks a little bit much. So they wanted to explore another option. And grades four through five, and we are going to loop in six, will continue with the ELO education as the literature and heavy nonfiction topics are better suited to upper elementary and middle grades, bringing in more science and social studies content. We are going to do a similar pilot to what happened last year, where it was a smaller stretch of time. It is aligned with where our current pacing is, so that no one is missing anything. And that will be communicated as well. And we are planning on a first read in May with our findings.
Any questions for Monica on that? I want to give kudos to Monica and our teachers. This has been to Amela, to Daryl. It's been a very large lift. And it's certainly, while I, I think we're appreciative of the fact that the state added some additional programs to look at, it certainly would have been a lot more helpful had those programs been added, say, you know, a lot earlier. So I just want to give kudos. So um, I just want to give kudos to everybody because it's, it's been a big lift. Thank you.
Earlier than the middle of December would have been much more convenient.
Yes, for sure. All right. Monica's going to stay up there because we've got a curriculum update for tonight. Yes. This is taking place to this month instead of taking place in April or May, just for everyone's uh, awareness. Um, April third, we have a board meeting on that Wednesday. It's a Wednesday, everybody, just a reminder. Uh, and there's also a finance committee meeting that night. So I'm trying to try to move some things up and streamline it because three of us at least are going to have to run out of here at. Seven twelve to be there for seven fifteen at Town Hall. So on you go, Monica.
That's perfect. It gives us that time for the teachers to work and when we have a nice presentation for you in May.
Great.
Okay. Um, so we do have a curriculum update generally in November, just as just for um, Bolton Public Schools, you know, district wide. Teachers had time to review the curriculum that were currently in our mapping software. We do use software to publish our curriculum documents. And they are, they enable us to run quality reports on assessments, scope and sequence. And you can also take a unit if let's say you decide at the end of the year and you review. Uh, and you decided a unit that you did uh, in October might be better suited. You know, a couple of months later, you can just kind of move it over, shift it around. You don't have to rewrite uh, over and over again. So. Um, but uh, all of the teachers had a chance to review what we currently had in the software and updated courses and content. So with new teachers coming in, different skill sets. People had a chance to say, you know what? We, we haven't been teaching this unit. Uh, in its entirety in this way, we wanted to change that. Some things were just um, removed, changed. There were some older courses that were in there that we needed to clean up. Uh, some people used, uh, moved units across content areas. And anything that was not currently um, being taught. Because we had been adding, but we had not been subtracting. So it looked like we had some courses that we didn't necessarily have. So we cleaned that up and took those out. Um, we also introduced our two new courses this year that were approved last year. Modern band and graphic design, both approved last year. They've been offered uh, and are have been more received by students. Uh, AP pre calculus, which is not really a new course, but was an upgraded pre calculus to AP before the school of the, uh, start of the school year. Has also been offered and well attended, about seventeen students in that. I just observed it recently. Um, and I realized it's been a very long time since I've taken pre calculus. That's why I thought. Um, and also this year, E C E Math for the World Arts was approved in the fall and that has been offered spring semester. For other content areas where language worked on seven to twelve alignment for Spanish instruction. We're going to come back to that a little bit when we talk about seal of bili literacy. Um, our secondary science, ELA, CTE, business. Uh, when there were no major revisions, that took place at that time. Um, K six reading revision is, we already have teachers scheduled for June after school lets out to start the year. But that is still something that's going to have to continue to be worked on throughout the year next year. Um, art and music will need some time after they've worked with some of those newer courses to refine those curricula. So uh, they will continue the new social studies standards, which we've been waiting for forever. Were we like, I feel like I've been saying we're getting them in since February twenty twenty three. Uh, they were released in October, but also available for wide release in December. So that, that's pretty much when everyone put eyes on them. Uh, and I have spoken to the academic leader for social studies here at BHS and they are informally reviewing it. We are hoping to see uh, by next year, the state. Put out the um, elementary model curriculum for social studies and that will help guide some of those decisions as well. And planned for next year, we are also going to be reviewing K eight math and science. Um, I don't expect, I think what we're going to do is plan out that revision. Because we have so much to do with ELA and reading at elementary. But we are going to start looking at that, finding it and aligning it with uh, the model curriculum that state has put out as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Monica on the curriculum update, anybody? All right. Thanks, Monica. All right. Um, next in a minute, we're going to have an update from BCS and BHS. But before I invite Amela up, um, I just want to share with everybody that on February first, the Connecticut State Department of Education. Announced the launch of the Connecticut Educator Support Funds Initiative. Helping our teachers with classroom expenses. Which would allocate four million dollars in RFS or funds to help pre K through grade twelve public school educators. Get classroom resources through Donors Choose, a five oh one C three nonprofit. The collaboration between C S D E and Donors Choose uh, would provide qualifying Connecticut educators with up to a thousand dollars in funding for projects. Empowering them to support student success with classroom resources. Eligible requests were funded on a first come, first served basis for as long as funding was available. I sent that message out to staff as soon as I got it. Our staff is amazing. That's all I'm going to say. So the funding was expended by Tuesday, February sixth. Four million dollars statewide. To be eligible, educators had to teach in a pre K to twelve Connecticut public school and needed to create a new project that aligns. Following C S D E S R priorities, including learning acceleration, academic renewal, student enrichment, social, emotional, mental health of students and school staff. And the projects were then funded within one week of the posting. Uh, tonight, both Mrs. Kelleher and Mr. Mazzelli will share more information about our amazing teachers and their. Very rapid response to this grant opportunity. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kelleher because Mr. Giard is at BCS for parent teacher conferences. As he has middle school student led conferences tonight and he has a group of students and he's meeting with parents.
Hello, everyone. So there have been many great happenings at BCS. Last month, we had our Looking in Theater Assembly for middle school. Looking in theater is a performance ensemble comprised of teenagers from the greater Hartford area who explore socially relevant issues. And create original theater, highlighting these issues. And middle schoolers always really enjoy this assembly every year. Today and tomorrow, like Superintendent Heck just said, we're holding parent teacher conferences. Our middle schools, our middle schoolers have been working very hard all year on preparing their student led conferences and are very excited and a little nervous. To present their progress to their families. Um, the month of March has been very busy with Read Across America events. On top of our usual events like switcheroo, drop everything and read and spirit week, we have added in some new events this year. We did a book bingo for all K through eight students where students got to play bingo for a chance to win a new book. Um, thank you to the PTA for the donation of our book bingo books. We gave about thirty books away that day, which was great. Middle school is participating in a classroom bookshop next week where they can shop around and sample different genres. And then they can join a raffle for a chance at another free book. Um, our students really love Read Across America Month and we truly love highlighting the love of reading at Bolton Center School. Right now, we are beginning to look ahead and prepare for our state testing, which will begin end of April. And lastly, BCS had twenty two teachers apply and who were awarded a Donors Choose Grant through the C S D E totaling eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars. For things like social emotional learning activities, flexible seating, math manipulatives, puzzles, speech stimulus cards. Carpet circles, exercise dice, now that holders, nonfiction texts and library books.
Any questions for Amela? Yeah, it's great job, right? So I would like to say, everybody, um, Amela is going to be leaving us for a little while. While she goes and has her baby in May. And uh, Kelly Bear, who is our instructional coach at Bolton Center School, will be stepping in as the interim AP. Uh, while Amela is home with her baby. So best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Mazzelli, you're up, sir.
Doki. Um, guidance has been busy um, and, and, and mostly in a good way. Um, so as Andrew mentioned, we did have the SATs uh, this week with super smooth. Um, but here's the important number, a hundred percent. Is the number. So all of our juniors have taken the SAT this week. We had two legitimately sick on test day. At guidance, because they're really busy and work hard, took care of those students the next day. So a hundred percent of our juniors tested upon SAT day and that, that's a, that's a huge number. Um, so we're very proud of that. College acceptances have started rolling. This was UConn week. Um, so we have some very smiling faces uh, and some frowning faces and some in between faces. Uh, and those typically are the faces of our seniors who didn't get into uh, perhaps the storage campuses they wanted. Um, they get deferred to other campuses. So we've already started counseling them and families. You, you know, you can try to appeal or maybe you have a two year plan to, to move your campus and those kinds of things. So um, Todd and Amy have been and, and super busy with them. Uh, and then the whole portal thing and whether it be um, one of the university portals to try to get your credits or the FAFSA portal. Um, it, it really has been heartening to see the one on one meetings. So I don't know if you, you know, the layout of the building, but guidance really is kind of connected to the administrative space. So I really have a sense of what's going on there. And the number of students who are always in there with Todd and Amy and our guidance intern. Um, and they will always take the time to do that one on one. The FAFSA is a mess, but let me help you recover your password. Let me help you get in it. Let me, let me send an email home to parents to say, hey, you know, you got to check your phone number because. If your phone number isn't right, they're going to send you a verification code to your home number instead of your cell phone and you're not going to get verified. By the way, that conversation took place in my living room last week. That actually didn't take place in guidance where my wife and had my phone, her phone and my son's phone. And was trying to get all three of us verified for the FAFSA. That's, that's, that's what it looks like. Um, they've also started on top of all that, the scheduling process. We talked a lot about uh, parent square, student square and how that really has enhanced our, our operations and our communication. So for the first time ever, um, parent square sent out personalized letters to every parent saying. These are the classes that your child's teachers are recommending. And here are the next steps, which is meet one with the counselor, request in et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that has been a huge enhancement that, that's really, I, I think it's been just a nice level of transparency with our families as we start that process. Uh, meanwhile, our students have been super busy. I just like to highlight periodically their, you know, their service to the community. I know Mrs. Heck mentions that part of the budget thing, but it, you know, it doesn't stop mid-year. Uh, blood drives. So blood drives kind of have been reimagined since COVID and with, you know, security issues. But we didn't step away from supporting blood drives in cooperation with the town. The blood drives are held uh, nearby up at Herick Park. And our students still help out and support that. It's still organized with the National Honor Society. So we're happy to, to partner with them. Uh, we were also very happy to support uh, Bolt Road Race once again this year. So for those of you who don't know, that's the big fundraiser um, for our athletic booster group. Uh, and it was very nice to see so many of our students helping out with that. Um, and as Andrew mentioned, uh, you know, there's a lock in for fun. Um, if you can consider staying up all night long in your high school fund, but uh, the bottom line is that's, that's not just for fun. It's not a class fundraiser. It is a fundraiser for St. Jude's, which is another tradition we've had. Um, and under the S R grant, we had uh, six teachers awarded the Donors Choose Grant for a total of over fifty four hundred dollars. For items including expanding classroom libraries, STEM exploration kits, uh, and some uh, special printing equipment for our, our makerspace. Uh, and I will tell you that there was a little bit of a competition. Um, because the I got it's and the I didn't get it's because I, I, I literally went to bed instead of staying up all night. Uh, we had one and correct me if I'm wrong. I think we had one teacher who's filed on Sunday morning. And before they went to bed on Sunday night had been approved. That's how fast that process went. So very, very proud of some of our teachers.
Our teachers were, were, they were all over it, right? So yeah, great job. Thank you. Any questions for Joe?
Yes, as it relates to guidance.
Yeah.
Other schools are doing or districts are doing that to support guidance or is there just nothing anyone can do to support these kids through this process? It's just a wait and see.
It, it is. Um, you know, so I had to have, I actually called where my son is in school and said, hey, we didn't get, and they're like, yeah, we don't. It's everywhere. It's everybody. So I think the, the encouragement. Figuring out the stumbling blocks like the verification, that's pretty much what we're able to do. Yeah.
Okay.
So, but thanks. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, uh, Mr. Mazzelli for talking about ways in which the students are involved with the broader community. I think it's critical that, and I really appreciate the efforts uh, that both BCS and BHS. Have uh, been doing recently to be more visible on social media and I, I think it is helping. Heard from people that they really like, that there's news about the school being propagated. So.
Okay, good. That's great. We had a little glitch last week. I had sent the latest update. Um, but it got forgotten. So I had a quick chat with Town Hall and they're on top of it for next time. So what they are doing, both schools are doing a great job and it was a great recommendation. Thank you. All right. That concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, to unfinished business and starting with the Board of Education budget. FY twenty five budget presentation to the finance committee that will be presenting next week.
So I believe you all have a copy um, at your seats. And. Do we want to add? Do we want to edit?
We need to update the budget to reflect the lower health issues?
No, we can't do that yet because we are, we started open enrollment today. So we have to go through open enrollment because we may have people that pick up the insurance that we didn't know were going to. So we won't know if we actually even have savings. So the number came in lower. We budgeted six percent. It came in at two percent, but it all depends on what happens at open enrollment.
And when does that very close?
Um, the end of March and then we've got to have a little time to, yeah, so it won't be until April.
But we will have that. We will know before the public hearing, but.
We, we should know before the public hearing on the budget. Yes. Yep.
Are any of these area budget requests by town or updated?
Those are the most updated numbers. Yes, correct. In fact, I took one of the towns off because they're not going to be done till the end of the month. So it didn't seem prudent to leave them on there with a blank. Just wondering if anybody liked my additions at the end.
It's good to me.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything else to add?
Um, I'm not, I don't think this is adding anything, but. Uh, Ellington seems to have a very low number and I just think to, to be prepared. If somebody says, why is out, you think you're low, but look at Ellington. What has Ellington done in the past? I mean, did they have a increase last year? Are they always low or?
They're always low. They have one of the lowest per pupil expenditures in the state, if not the lowest. Um, they also had some offsets. Um, with some other things that things like we don't have, like self insurance or. You know, additional um. Revenue in town from a tax base that we don't have here.
Okay. Good answer.
Thanks.
Uh, anyone else like this?
All right.
Alrighty, on to new business and starting with the seal of bi literacy.
All right. I'm going to turn that back over to Monica. She's going to share a presentation with you. And I just want to remind the board, um, you may remember we had a parent share with us that. They felt that maybe this was something that we should look at and, and put into play. And it, it's taken us a little time to get it done, but we're here and we're very proud of this. So, and, and we thank that parent for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, and we actually look into it and look, we did.
Yes, we did.
Ready to go. Um, so this is just a smaller version. I have a, a long FAQ that's going to be going out to families. Our target right now is families, uh, students in grade six through twelve. Because in grade six, that is when we would want to encourage our students to take a uh, a world language. So this Connecticut Seal of Bili literacy, this was approved to move forward with this uh, in the legislature uh, in twenty seventeen. And it is an award that's given to our high school seniors. It is only given during senior year who have demonstrated a high level of proficiency. It is our plan here in Bolton is that it will be an award presented at graduation with the other graduation awards. There will be a seal affixed to that certificate and it will also be displayed on a student's transcript. So we, it just says, you know how if you. So we, it just says, you know how if you have something, if you're like, you know, magna come out, then it will just say Seal of Bi Literacy there if a student earns the seal. Um, in recognition of their ability to be both bilingual and biliterate. So that means that they are literate in all four domains. They are able to uh in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. It aligns with our mission to inspire students to grow as learners, individuals, and citizens. So who's eligible for this? Any student can take the assessments that we are going to use. I mean, really, at any point that they feel confident and able to. But we are looking at a target of, you know, for any time from the end of your tenth grade year. If you are taking Spanish, for example, and the only place you are taking it in school is highly unlikely that you are going to be ready or at a level of proficiency uh until you are at the earliest uh in tenth grade. But we do encourage students to apply as soon as they feel confident enough to do so, and that may be in a variety of languages. So you will see why there may be a circumstance where a student would feel confident um testing in a language that may not be offered in school. And what is the purpose of the Seal of Bi Literacy? It's recognition of a student's efforts to become bilingual. It encourages them to study languages, recognizes the value of language diversity. I'm just gonna sort of um try to encapsulate that without reading every bullet to you. Uh, but it does assist universities in being able to identify a student who might also be continuing to pursue either another language or further instruction in the language that they studied in high school. Um, when we are talking about twenty-first century skills and transferable skills, we are looking at what's going to help a student succeed in a global society and certainly being multilingual. At the very least, bilingual is certainly helpful with that. Um, and it encourages them to develop communicative proficiency in multiple languages. And many students often say that they don't even truly understand, like really thoroughly understand English grammar until they start taking a world language. And then they have to apply what they know in English to their new language, and that uh helps them. So are students going to be limited to languages? Oh, sorry, excuse me, I thought you were talking about two languages taught at BHS. No, students can take a number of different pathways. So for example, if a student is in school for heritage language that is spoken at home, like Greek or Hebrew or Polish, that is something that can be tested and accepted for the Seal of Bi Literacy. So if a student has been traveling for years with their family, and this is their heritage language, we can assess in that language, the number of assessments. The Apple alone can assess eleven languages. Um, and then we can also assess in probably almost any other language we'd be able to find, uh, including American Sign Language. If that is what a student chooses. There are some students who may be coming from dual language programs. We have some of those in the area. Uh, heritage language, just uh study maybe your birth language and independent study. So some students do take it upon themselves. I will say Duolingo will not get you here by itself, so nobody get too confident there. Um, and how are we going to assess it? Currently, the three most common ways are going to be the Apple assessment. Is Form B. Students have to achieve a score of intermediate three in all four domains. They may also take the Alira if they are Latin students. Obviously, there is not a speaking and listening part of the Latin test. They're only taking reading and writing for that. So the Alira is open and available for students. And if students are in a language for which we are offering the Advanced Placement Exam, they can also take the Advanced Placement Exam. The only drawback of that is there's a chance we may not have their AP results to get them their exact certificate for graduation. Um, so the assessments cover the following languages. If we're just looking at these three, uh, so you can see it's a, it's a relatively extensive list. And then if you are in another language, um, these are just a few examples, Hebrew, Polish, Hindi, Greek. We have students who speak Gujarati. We have students who speak Hindi. We have students who speak Urdu. They can be tested in these languages. For that, we may use the Aman Stamp for as adaptive assessment or another state-approved assessment. It is an extensive list of languages, um, if need be. And for all assessments, again, proficiency in the four domains, that's just a reminder. And uh, so we do want to encourage students to work toward the Seal of Bi Literacy if they are able to. And we recommend, it's just our recognition that this is important, us being part of a global society. And who are able to do so.
Great.
So we are gonna move forward.
Questions for Monica?
No, that's great.
It's so exciting.
I think this is.
Yeah, Chris, yeah.
Um, so who will pay for the assessment? Will the students have to?
They will unless there is demonstrated hardship, the same way we do the AP exams.
Okay.
I will say this is an affordable assessment. The Alira costs ten dollars and the Apple costs twenty. Um, it now, I, for some of the more complex languages, that may go up because it's a different assessment. But for our most common languages, it is very affordable.
Very good. Um, did the state set the requirements as far as what a level of proficiency?
Yes, that, those are published.
Because intermediate, I think, is only the, like, the second lowest, so it's.
It's intermediate three, so it's kind of like just above that. Yes.
Thank you. So I don't think we need to do this, but it would be.
Could I just, I want to publicly thank Chris Alice, um, ahead of our oral language program. So it was, it was Chris and Monica and I, we've been working our way slowly through this. Uh, so I just want to publicly thank him for his, his enthusiasm uh and his assistance with this.
Yes, yeah, we definitely ran everything by Christopher Flout, too. And we looked out all, I mean, every assessment that we could have available to us so that it would be attainable for us.
Yeah, great job, Monica, Joe, and Chris. Thank you. Could we just have a motion to approve this? I don't think we need to, but I would love to have that on the record. Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Any more questions or comments about the Seal of Bi Literacy? I just think it's very good that we offer our students every opportunity to do anything they can to improve themselves and their their resumes. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Am I opposed or abstaining? Very good, on to our new course proposal, ECE Music Appreciation.
So Mr. Tyler Langworthy came to me um this semester and put forth a proposal for ECE Music Appreciation with a really wonderful rationale. He's been a great addition to Bolton, I'm sure you can agree. He's um taken on AP Music Theory. He took the um training for that, and now he is moving to ECE Music Appreciation. It is a semester long UConn course. I'm reading this from his course proposal, so uh in which students listen to, engage with, analyze, and discuss music, starting with antiquity and leading into the modern era. There is no prerequisite prerequisite for taking this class, and students with no musical experience are strongly encouraged to sign up. The course utilizes music from all genres, primarily classical, modern, hip-hop, rock, jazz, rhythm and blues, reggae, hip-hop, country, and metal. Students will rediscover what it means to listen critically and develop basic off-skills like active listening, audiation, and a fundamental knowledge of music theory. The course will also focus on the transferable skills of critical thinking, communication, creative and practical problem-solving, and self-direction. Um, Mr. Langworthy also noted in our meeting that all of our other courses are for students who are interested in performing or being part of an ensemble, and this is something that is available to an enthusiast who may not see themselves as a performer. There are no additional costs associated with this course beyond the teacher's edition as the text.
Thank you. Any questions? Come on, you know, yes, Ria.
Yes, so I I I assume that the teacher is, what's the teacher's name again?
Mr. Langworthy.
Langworthy. I assume that he has a feel, uh, knowledge that he will have attended the schools. That he knows that there'll be a population who that wants this class.
He's assessed some interest.
I'd like to participate.
Me too.
That's a great idea.
Okay, some early college experience.
Yes, it is a early college experience with the opportunity for uh UConn credit.
Does that mean that the curriculum is set by UConn?
Uh, it is, he does have some um.
Requirements that he has to meet.
Some requirements that he has to meet, but he is able to bring in uh content based on, you know, student interest and his familiarity.
It sounded like the the list of genres that you're gonna focus on is very much out of the Western music tradition. Will there be any introduction or consideration of, you know, Asian music, Indian classical music?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer, but I will pose, certainly pose that question to him.
Mr. Langworthy actually participated as an instructor in this course during his student teaching, so he has experience teaching the course on it.
Great, so we need a a motion to approve the new course, ECE Music Appreciation.
I'm making a motion.
Thanks, Ria.
A second.
Um, any other questions or comments about the ECE Music Appreciation? Uh, I would like to thank the administration, Mr. Langworthy. I love adding things that have the opportunity for college credit, and I love adding things that do not have additional costs, which I am tasked to ask. And when he said that and answered those questions, I said, this is a no-brainer. Well, please don't let that influence your vote. Are there any other questions or comments?
I was gonna say, Gloria, that's the same thing, but I figured you.
You have to let him go with it, right?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, on to healthy food certification and exemptions.
Favorite annual.
Correct, yes, so I I'll read the motion, um, because it has to be, or or you can.
It's gonna volunteer.
You can, please do.
I'll fight you about it.
No, no, it's, okay. So we need a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section ten dash two-one-five F, the Bolton Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school purposes sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Ask a question?
Sure.
How does, how does the Ford Event certify non-school organizations and groups at very last?
So.
How do you ensure?
When they're in our building, but then we're gonna talk about it in the next motion, because we give them an opportunity to sell some things. Okay? Then we do it to the best of our best.
Okay, it's, it's hard to do, I'm sure.
Yeah. Anybody want to move that forward?
Somebody.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, do we have any other questions or comments about our healthy food certification? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, now looking for a motion that the Bolton Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section ten dash two-two-one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with events occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or stool store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interest class debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Thanks.
It's, does that language complicate uh things like lock-ins or anything that is overnight? Can you not serve any?
No, because the school day starts at seven twenty-five here.
Right, but according to this, it starts.
I know.
Midnight.
But it doesn't.
We're not worried about that.
We're not.
The last call for unhealthy snacks.
No, we're not.
They're selling the food.
It may, they're, they may not be selling food, who will simply be provided at, like, at that event, for example. But, for example, like, you know, we have the girls' basketball game here, and we have tournament play here. So they set up a little booth, I don't know what else you call it, right? And they're selling Gatorade, and they're selling chips and water bottles, things like that. And it's associated with the event, to the point that you asked before. Um, this is required by USDA. This is not this is required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's not met the Connecticut Nutrition, make sure there's no, like, CBD brownies or something, right?
Well, yeah, we usually buy packaged things, it's not.
Okay, so you would know what we're buying. Would it just come from a parent that said, I wanna have some?
Okay, so there's, there's no level of assurance that we're required to do, too.
But we also have to meet the Health Department.
Standards, too, yeah, so we're, we're buying baked chips and, you know, things like that. Anybody want to move that? Thank you, Sue.
Anyone who has any further questions or comments about this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm opposed, abstaining. Already covered G four and on to resignations.
Uh, we received a resignation from BCS paraprofessional Justine Cutting and BHS Guide Administrative Assistant Megan Redner. And I want to thank them for the service to the Bolton Public Schools and wish them well.
On to future business. If we have any. And now we are looking for a motion to go in. Okay, we're looking for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion concerning a temporary adjustment of job responsibilities and contract amendment for the Director of HR, Student Support Services, and also the discussion concerning the change of contract terms for Dean of Students and to invite the Superintendent and Director of HR and Student Support Services.
Second.
And Chris, questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.